Six thirty four, my computer shows, Kim, go ahead and use whatever number you have there. In terms of roll call, we are all here except for Scott McTee, who I expect to join us hopefully shortly. And also acknowledge that Scott Cowan will need to leave sometime after seven thirty, I believe, Scott, and just go ahead and indicate when you're leaving so Kim has it on the file, please.
Yep, I will.
Thank you, sir. So any changes or additions to the agenda? If not hearing none, let's move on to the consent agenda, which includes House Meeting Minutes on March ninth and fifteenth, and accept us as a report on city accounts payable. Free documents, what's your pleasure, counsel? What do you want to do with that?
We make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as stated.
Take it.
Okay, I see Scott McTee has joined us, so we are now all here. Those in favor of the message, please, or the motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, forgot to use the yes. We'll go back to use the little yes or no indicators going forward. Motion, Chris. Thank you. Guest presentations. I think I saw.
Laurie's on. Yeah, excuse me.
How's it going? Sorry, I'm not by video. I'm sitting in my patrol car and the sun is shining on my face, so it's probably not a very wait to go into Harrisburg's council meeting. But for the sheriff's office report for the month of March, for Millersburg, there were six traffic citations issued, thirteen traffic warnings. There were four crashes in the city this last month in March and three adults arrested. There were one hundred and forty-seven complaints or incidents investigated, and Millersburg had two hundred and six point seven five hours out of the one hundred and fifty-three contracted hours for last month. And I know if the question's going to come up about traffic crashes, I looked at those and the ones that were reported were in different areas, and I believe error in judgment on operators, nothing necessarily a safety concern for the city. I know that one involved out by Love's coming off the interchange there from the freeway, just a couple trucks that weren't able to avoid each other. No major injuries. There was an injury crash where a lady broke her ankle, it appeared. And she was the one at fault driving and was issued a citation for following too closely. And then it sounded like the one at Millersburg Drive in Old Salem was more of a T-bone. Someone pulled out, obviously not looking and giving way for oncoming traffic, and they collided. And then whatever the goofy guy was doing, driving down Clearwater at a higher rate of speed and crashed into a vehicle there, parked vehicle and whatnot. There were some minor injuries and that gentleman was issued citations as well. Of note, the deputies working one evening did. There was a alert kiddo who had heard some noises outside their house. It turns out somebody was trying to break into one of the utility trailers. So deputies from the area looking for other open cargo trailers or whatnot and sat on one in particular, and lo and behold, these two guys from Marion County came back looking to steal stuff. So they got those guys and some admissions and some recovered property for other agencies. So that was good.
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah, there's been a little bit of an uptick in some unlocked vehicles and people entering those and taking stuff out, of course. Catalytic converters are still being taken and just by word of mouth from, you know, some people that I know out of the Millersburg area as well as coming from that monthly report. Some juveniles in the park after hours. And one of the, you know, a deputy was out with some juveniles. There was a complaint. He snuck up on them. He, you know, between ages of thirteen and fifteen, I believe, maybe up to sixteen, they were returned home. And then very shortly after that, there was a call in about a car driving by and a window busted out out of nowhere. Not sure, you know, if there was a pellet gun, if it rocks through in or what, but it scared that guy and his little girl in the car with him. So, you know, there's been word to the deputies to do some extra patrols around the park later in the evening when it starts to get dark and whatnot. So. But that's what's been going on in the city, pretty busy month last month. An update on the drive-by shooting from Waverly Drive. I know that detectives have one or two suspects identified. They're just working really hard to, you know, solidify all the evidence against them and then work on putting at least one and possibly two involved in custody. So. But that's all I know on that. And any questions from anybody?
Yeah, I've got one and I'm guilty because I haven't discussed it with Kevin before you. But I would really welcome your thoughts or maybe a little bit of research on the amount of calls we're getting at Love's.
Okay, yeah.
My memory tells me that it's, we're getting, we're getting an uptick of all kinds of different relates, different types of calls to that facility. So just, I don't want to get into it now, but I'd be really curious to, I'd like your opinion. Is it something that's normal? Or should we be concerned about the amount of hours we're spending on that facility?
Sure, yeah, I can take a look at all that and kind of do a rundown of at least so far this year from January, you know, and through this month and be able to talk with you and Kevin about that. I see the calls and we are responding out there, but as far as how much time we're spending on issues out there, I'm not exactly sure.
When we, when we first started, I was personally actually tracking it month to month, and it was, it was no big deal. It was pretty small in fact, in terms of percentage of the whole. But my, my observation over the last few months is it appears to be just the opposite now, but I could be wrong. I just, I would welcome you to take a look at it and just give us your opinion.
Yeah, absolutely. I can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions?
All right. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Chief Wood, you're next with the Albany Fire Department, quarter report.
Right, good evening, Mayor, council staff. Speaking of Loves, on a kind of a different note, our community paramedic along with Lynn County Public Health were out there on Friday giving vaccines to truck drivers who wanted them. They had the Johnson and Johnson vaccine out there and they gave, I didn't get an exact number, but I heard between forty and fifty. So anyway, so our quarterly report for you all. You know, you can probably move it to the next slide here. So kind of the same setup as previous reports. So far this fiscal year, there's been two hundred and twenty-seven requests for services. That's a little faster clip than the previous year. This time last year, we were at two hundred and six. So the frequencies of calls are going up a little bit. Our response time, though, is remaining pretty consistent, as you can see on the right in the slide. All right, next slide. So types of calls. In the past, usually sick persons or lift assists kind of lead the way. Fire alarm activations are in the top spot right now. I went through and looked at the thirty-one calls, and really they're distributed pretty evenly over each month. So there's, or over the period of time that we're reporting on, there are about three to four a month, which given the amount of industry that you have out there, I don't believe that's an inappropriate amount of times us going out. Your lift assists are down a little bit. So that's good. I know that's something that we've talked about before. And again, you know, with the community paramedic like we have, she's able to go out and help mitigate those lift assists and try to turn those lift assists into people just not falling. All right, next slide. And then we were, you can see here the number of fire and life safety evaluations. Again, those are just us going into businesses, touching base with them, making sure that there aren't any fire code violations, that they don't have daisy chained extension cords or uncovered plates or blocked exits, items that affect life safety. And then community paramedic, it looks like she's been out there. I wasn't able to get March's data. She's been really busy with vaccines, so she hasn't quite got all her data entered yet. But for January, it looks like we met with a couple Millersburg citizens. All right, next slide. So this is, I just wanted to let you all know, I'm sure City Manager Kreitman has kept you informed and he may even talk about this tonight, but we have a meeting, an ambulance service area meeting on Thursday, where Millersburg as well as Albany Fire Department and Jefferson Fire District are answering questions that the ambulance service area committee had. So we've all shared each other's information, so everybody kind of has an idea of, of what everybody's stance is. So I don't know that a decision will be made that day, but it will be a step towards something that I believe all of you have been wanting for some time. Next slide. We produced a 2020 annual report that I'd love to be able to get to you. It's a larger file size, so I'll have to lean on Kevin and Janelle to make that happen. But we haven't, as a department, we haven't done an annual report in quite some time. And it's something that myself, my staff, we all wanted to start doing again. And just trying to capture all that's happened in the previous year and be able to provide it to our community, the people we serve, so they can see some of the happenings at AFD. And as a side note, it also serves as a good way to provide a historical document for people ten, twenty years from now to look back on and see what happened. Next slide.
Shane, that is, we do have a link on our website. So if you click under Fire Service under Services, you'll see a link to, to it, links over to the Fire Department's website for the end of report.
Okay, thank you very much, Kevin. Next slide is something I wanted to make you aware of. We've been pushing it out on social media quite a bit, and I'm not really sure how much of this affects Millersburg proper as much as it does in some of our rural areas. But given the fire season last year and the fact that we all saw firsthand that wild wildfire can affect, can affect the valley. We are working with Oregon Department of Forestry as well as Oregon State University and starting down the path of trying to make our communities a bit more wildfire aware. So on May twelfth, we have a training session that's specific to Albany and our area and that we've tried to push out to people that, that folks can start learning what it means to make their home fire or wildfire safe, that there's some real simple things that they can do. And even on some of, you know, in Millersburg proper, where the homes butt up against, you know, let's say, open space, there are, you know, just keeping your gutters clean, keeping your grass green, your plants alive and watered. Those simple things or, or, you know, bushes away from their home. Those are just really some simple things that people can do that'll increase the chance of their home making it if wildfire were to approach their house. All right, next slide. And also I just wanted to make you aware of one of our partners, Lynn County Public Health, that they were the recipient of one of the chief's awards. It's a award that as Fire Chief of Albany Fire Department, chiefs long before me identify individuals or groups of people that have done special things for the department. And this year, one of the recipients is Lynn County Public Health. They have been an excellent partner from the very beginning of the pandemic, and we've leaned on them heavily. And then in turn, we've been able to help them as well. So we've developed a great relationship with both of them. In the middle there, on the right in the suit is Todd Noble. He's responsible for Lynn County Public Health. And then the two individuals right there, they're referred to as Team Anderson. They're a husband and wife duo, Eric and Eva Anderson. Great, great people. And let's see here, the other thing, before I go to any questions, I sometimes from the crews solicit any items or things that have happened in your community. And I do believe I shared both of these with you. If I did, please stop me. But we had a, an instance where a drone was stuck on somebody's roof. They didn't know who to call, and so we ended up finding out about it. The crews went out there and retrieved the drone as well as they helped the person unclog their gutters while they were up on the roof. And I know when you contracted with us, you were contracting a gutter cleaning service, but by and large, our people, when they see something that needs to be done, they just jump to it and get it done. And then there was also a wind event that blew a canvas covered, cover, boat cover off of a boat and blew it up onto somebody's shed. And again, the person had recently had, or not again, the person recently had surgery, couldn't get up there to get it and didn't know what to do. And it turns out we have ladders and the ability to climb them, so we went and helped the individual. So with that, and go to the next slide and answer any questions you have.
Shane, the number of fire alarms, I believe it was thirty or forty on your list, are the bulk of those false alarms?
Yes, the overwhelming are false alarms. And usually they'll, and when I looked at them, there's thirty-one. There were quite a few that were repetitive. So what, what can happen is we'll go out, will, the alarm will go off, we'll get dispatched, we'll go out, we'll make sure that there's not any hazards. And then we'll work with the business owner to reset the alarm and then leave. Most of the time, sometimes it's just maybe like a bug in a, in a detector that sets it off. But sometimes we'll end up being dispatched again to go back out there an hour later. Because whatever the issue was, was it something that we could easily fix? It's something that they would need to get a technician out to, to fix. So even though the number's thirty-one, those are thirty-one responses, but it's not thirty-one like separate events.
I understand. I understand that. And the reason for the question is, is that minimal one, I thought that was probably the case. And it's the same situation we have with law enforcement. We had that for some time. In fact, I remember several years ago, we had one guy, there was eighteen alarms in one location over, over a couple of months. Well, that in particular issue, but my concern is, one, I don't know what to do about it. We have both law enforcement and fire, and two, he's recognized a cost associated with responding to false alarms. So in work, I'd hate to guess what Albany spends on this compared to Millersburg, but just sort of awareness that I, if you get any magic answers how to help improve that situation, I'd be anxious to hear.
I don't have any magic answers, but I can tell you what we do, that if we do start, like for the law enforcement person who had eighteen alarms, we would, if that happened on the fire side, we would never get to eighteen alarms. That we would have one of our deputy fire marshals go out and really, because at that point, they probably have a faulty alarm system, and we have the fire code that we can leverage to get people to fix their alarm systems. So we have, we have a bit of leverage, so it doesn't get to that point.
Understand. Okay, well, thank you. It just, it's just an opportunity that's puzzling on both sides, both law enforcement and fire. So thank you. I have a better understanding, but don't know what to do about it.
Well, Mayor, one of the things is Chief Wood mentioned, keep in mind, we have a large concentration of industry here compared to a lot of others. And a lot of these industries are dust producing industries as well. And a lot of times that's where it's, where it's at, and it's, it's a housekeeping issue at times. But you're going to see a higher number just because of the type of industries we have out here and the number. So, I mean, ATI, I forget, we don't see much of ATI, but because everything goes in and they check them first. But, you know, just them alone, I think they have over a hundred facilities, a hundred buildings on their site, so.
Yeah, I didn't want to name companies, but Palm Harbor and the sales side of Palm Harbor have been big ticket at it. They've been high numbers over the years, given that probably have alarm every one of their show facilities.
And keep in mind, Palm Harbor, one of their alarm activations actually was a fire that we had this past year.
Interesting. Okay, well, good. Good, okay. Anybody else have any questions for Shane? Comments? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Chief.
Kevin, I understand we have somebody in the room who wants to talk to the farmer's market. Can you introduce that for me, please? I've lost you, Kevin. No sound.
Bethany is with us, and she had asked to give the council an update. So I see her camera is off right now, and she's muted, but it looks like there she is.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
All right, awesome. Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for having me. Um, as Kevin said, my name is Bethany Gambardella, and about a year ago, we decided, you know, why should, why we should have a farmer's market in Millersburg. So I kind of did some fishing around and found a really large number of people who would love to help out. So to our surprise and awesome excitement, we have a pretty large group of all members of, of our group who live in Millersburg proper, except for myself. I actually live just on the other side of the freeway on Ucress. But anyhow, so we decided our goal would be to have a market for 2021. And things are really coming together really nicely. We've been working with Kevin and Janelle. They've been fabulous going over things with us, and we've picked, worked out a location with them as to the Millersburg City Park. And it will be just at the, in the parking lot towards the back of the parking lot. It'll be on Wednesdays from four PM to seven PM. And, which is great because in the area, there's no evening markets like that, and there's not midweek markets. So that'll be a great thing for not only our residents, because and largely the residents of Millersburg are working, people who don't get off until five anyways. So they miss a lot of the markets who close at five or six in the area. So that's great. This week we got a update from the Oregon Farmers Market Association. They're a great a group that kind of just organizes certain rules that the state makes to make it more clear for people like myself and other people running markets to understand exactly what we're supposed to do. And regarding COVID, it's been obviously kind of tricky for everything. But we, they came out with a seminar and we went through all that. And we have a complete plan of all the guidelines that they have put out, and we will follow all of them. And we'll be, we'll be doing things like inside the market, have to have people wearing masks. That's just one of the requirements to be able to have a market. And I noticed just having my kids at the park, a lot of people don't prefer wearing masks outside at the park, which is completely fine, but once they come into the market, they'll have to put one on. And we're just going to approach it as, hey, guys, if you'd like to help us stay open and support our market, please wear a mask. Just so we don't get into any, you know, people arguing or anything like that. But well, there are other measures. We have to have a person, designated person who is kind of like a distance police. Social distancing within other groups or other families. We're going to be posting this before you come into the entrance of the market. And so hopefully people will kind of abide by that anyways, since it's been a whole year of this. And so that kind of seems natural to keep your distance from everyone around you. Anyway, so besides that, we have another person that we're required to wipe down surface areas of the bathroom. So we have that also. So at every market, we have two volunteers of people from our community that are each volunteered for each week. And it rotates, but they all have a set list of duties. They all are clear on what they will be doing and helping out with during the market. In the physical market, we've had some awesome, really, really great vendors approach us and super excited about them. Just to name a few, we have Greenbridge. Greenbridge is one that's actually just in Jefferson. And they have a phenomenal selection of produce and berries and all kinds of stuff. And they actually sell up in Lake Oswego and Salem and in Lebanon. So they're really excited about this one because it's so close to home, and so am I because they're really great. We have farm, we have Cameron Ridge Farms, we have Ridgeview Farms, who's a great egg lady. We have, Cameron does awesome canning and some really great other material. We also have an indoor specialized indoor plant vendor who is, her business name is called Modern House Plants. And very great, I feel like that's kind of like really trendy right now, especially with the, in the moms of the community. Having indoor plants is kind of cool, and it's definitely something not the markets and our, any of our markets in the area have, so that's kind of cool. Myself, I'm a, my husband's a beekeeper, so I, he does the actual hard work, and then I do the selling of the honey. So we are actually happen to be the only beekeepers who have eight different varietal honeys. And so that's kind of exciting too, because you, when you taste the different honeys, you can taste the difference and just a little bit more unique in our market. Then we have, I know we have a few more and I'm just blanking out. We have a bakery coming. And we also have a few others, and I'm sure I, I'm, I have a list of all of them. So far, we only have nine vendors. Just because we don't want to do too many at first and be like, oh, crud, we don't have any room. The guidelines state that the vendors don't have to be exactly six feet apart. But what we do worry about is the lines of customers coming in. So if we can situate the vendor booth in a way that when the people line up to buy or purchase, they're not like getting too close. So the way the spaces over in the selection where, the place where we selected to have the market, it's going to be, I think it'll be good because it'll give us more space as far as not just like, here's a row and here's a row. It's, gives us a little more wiggle room there. Yeah, so I'm just trying, oh, thank you. Yeah, that's great to show us where the market at. That's, that's cool. Good, good idea. So yeah, as far as planning and everything, I'm pretty much just going off of what other well-established good markets are doing, like Carvallos. I want to make sure that we're following our Ps and Qs. And I just, just to make sure we're successful, because once we do that, then I feel like this market will, you know, potentially be here for a long time. But yeah, that's pretty much all I can think about, talking about. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions from council?
Yeah, this is Scott. Great info, appreciate it. Excited too as well. When, when's the first one planned?
Yeah, sorry about that. So they're all going to be on Wednesdays, June, July and August from four to seven. So the first one will just be the June, the first Wednesday in June, which is June second.
Okay, and it's on the Wednesdays and throughout. What, what kind of advertisement are we looking at?
Yeah, so I was actually going to ask you guys if maybe we could put it in the reader board, like coming soon, farmer's market. Or even, we've had a great, awesome, lots of people want to donate and, or, or, you know, make a sign for us, which is awesome. We will have a banner, and if we could put that maybe in front of city halls, in the yard or something, that would be awesome. And then there's another guy who wants to donate sandwich boards, you know, like the sticky ones that you can put in your yard, not the sandwich, sorry, just like the yard post. Not the sandwich, sorry. Just like the yard post, um, like the ones that you just put in the ground. I can't think of the word. Um, he wants to, uh, make some of those. So I figure starting next month, we'd start to start to advertise, um, in May, uh, just to get ready for people to come for the June.
Cool. Yeah, I, I think I would support, uh, you know, us trying to help out with that with the reader board or even our website, which, um, we could do potentially. Um, so yeah, excited for that. Are there, are there, um, are there any fees? I, I know we've talked about this past as council. I just might have forgotten any fees with the vendors coming in?
Yeah. So what I did this year was kind of, I don't know. I feel like it kind of worked out for our biz, our benefit in the fact that we got really good vendors. Um, so what I did was I said that there was no vendor fee and no application fee either, because as a group, we haven't specifically figured out if we want to be a for-profit or nonprofit group. Um, we can, uh, we can, we can decide which one we want to do. But, um, when we take in money, we didn't want that to conflict with any legality, um, you know, purposes. So when people donate, they're donating either to individuals to purchase like the materials we need or they're giving us cash currently. Uh, but in the future, for sure, next year, I see us most likely becoming a nonprofit. Um, but then again, um, so in this market, I always make a, make a point to literally have the group vote on absolutely everything. And it might be a little annoying, but I figure people feel more, um, feel more obligated and like pride, pride in something when they have their, you know, saying stuff. So we'll turn that over to our market to vote on eventually. Um, but definitely with, within the fees this year, we haven't had people, um, vendors give us these. And that has helped us because, um, the vendors are like, oh wow, we want to be in this. And so we can kind of pick and choose the, the really good ones that, that know that once we show, like tell them about this market and all the potential it has, they're like, oh, we're all over this, um, which has been great. So.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Appreciate all the info.
Sure. Thanks.
Other council comments? I personally am really glad to see this. This is an awesome, awesome idea that my guess is this is going to go over very well. So thank you for, thank you for leading the process.
Totally. I'm so excited. Bet.
Yeah, I know several people are very excited about this myself, so.
Woo, cool.
Good job.
One more thing I wanted to say is, um, so initially we were like super excited about having activities for our community like, um, pie cooking contests or, um, salsa contest or even like, um, dance lessons, like couples dance lesson in the parking lot, you know, different, just fun stuff for everybody in the community. But the, um, OF, uh, Oregon Health Department and everything shut that down. So we're actually like, uh, not, we're, we can't have any like extra activities that make, um, provide more groups of people. So in the future though, uh, we plan to like make it really fun and not all the time have a huge activity, but just something fun for families or individuals to come down to kind of be with their, um, neighbors and stuff. So.
I'm sure you've looked at this. You wouldn't be proposing what you're doing, but I guess I'm mildly concerned. Do you have enough space in that parking lot area for all of the booths as well as all the carts? Is that going to work?
Yeah. So right now, um, we're kind of, I'm a little concerned about that because there might, it just might, we not, might not have enough parking. But we did come up with a plan. Um, so as far as, uh, people who live around the park or even like walking distance, if they walk, then they would get an incentive. So they would get like, um, a market bucks to spend at the market, um, if they walk. So that's just kind of like kicked around like to kind of help people not bring their car.
Okay. Good luck with that. I hope that works.
Yeah, I, that would be great. And I mean, it would be like, I mean, quite, you know, nice little, they can, you know, take home some berries or something or, oh, and I forgot, I'm sorry. We're going to have, I'm so excited. One more vendor I forgot to tell you about. Um, we're having a vendor from La Combe and she, um, runs, uh, Nourish with Nature. She does pork, beef and chicken, and you can literally buy right from the farm from her. It's frozen, but from her at the market. So that's really exciting.
Well, very good. Thank you so much for leading it and reporting out to us.
Wait, thank you for having me, guys.
Thank you. I'm assuming there's no further questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Good. All right. Well, thanks. Thanks so much. We're going to move on. Thank you.
Can I add something real quick on the parking? We have had conversations on that. So, uh, we will also, and Bethany's aware of this and so is, uh, JBO, but we have, uh, youth baseball going on at the same time, some of the evenings. So we did talk about potentially signing, um, Zolke for no parking during that time, especially near the entrance for site clearance reasons. And we can also, you know, get the word out that people can park at city hall and walk over to the market as well. So we have been talking about the parking. Um, it could be challenging when this gets bigger.
So, okay. Thank you so much. Um, we need to talk about additional parking space on a permanent basis and we know what that, okay. Future discussion. Thank you. Is that it? Okay. Moving on to public comment. This comment section is for the public, of course, and these are items that does not pertain to the hearing that's coming up next regarding, uh, our charter. And this is specifically other comments and so forth. And Kevin has got one he's going to share with us. But once we get done with input from Kevin, then we'll open it up for other members of the public who may have other items to discuss with us as well, which we welcome and encourage. So Kevin was going to run through one that we've received. After which, uh, if others would like to speak just about any other topic, uh, please, I encourage you to do so. So Kevin, you want to talk about the letter we received from Greg Siggenhagel? Uh, which relates to, like, Craig was okay with the comments that, I'm sorry, with the draft document that we're going to review in the hearing, but he had additional comments that don't pertain to that specifically. And Kevin's going to walk us through that.
So as the mayor mentioned, you, each of you got a copy of that in your, your packet. I'm just going to go over a couple of things and that's just to remind you of. And if you have questions, I don't know that there's any need for action on this item tonight. Uh, or, you know, that's really a council decision, um, on it. But with regards to, you know, can you pull that?
Open it.
Yeah. Pull that up. I just want to point out a, a couple of, of things with regards to, uh, residency requirements. So he had a couple of things that he wanted to propose to council as you receive. And one of those was the term limits of residency for council. And that is something that council, uh, that would be a council or if, uh, citizens wanted to, um, and Forrest can talk about, weigh in on that. Our charter allows a couple of different ways. One for councils to be proposed, um, on there. But one of the things, a couple of things he meant that he would like to see amend the charter to include is the mayor to be elected by voters, not appointed by council. Uh, but what he's proposing really wouldn't change how the mayor, regardless of who it is, functions today, other than it would be appointed. It would still be a council member and things like that. So he's also proposed, asked you to consider term limits, uh, for council members, termless for committee appointments. Um, he also talked about employee policy that strictly prohibits electioneering. Um, and that is actually in our policy. Um, that is a state law that it's illegal. We remind our employees of that constantly and that is in our employee policy. And every election cycle, we remind them and we have a posting from the state on it. And this is the posting that's, it's out and reminds employees, um, on that. So, and I asked Forrest, uh, if he knew what that was in reference to, and he did not re- recall. So, but that is, is there. The other thing that he brought up was residency. Um, and charter does require that councillors are residents. And as well, as far as residency, um, the city did adopt, council adopted our committees. And I'll have Janelle pull that up real quick. And our, um, our Miller's for a commission committees, um, commission and committees manual, you can see here eligibility requirements typically required that committee members reside within the Miller's for city limits. Specific exceptions to residency requirement or additional specifications may be designated by council, policy or state law. The only one that, uh, only committee that council does allow outside residents from. So you can see here to serve, committee members must be residents unless otherwise specified for given committee. And the only committee that that's allowed for is the events committee because of council felt that there may be business leaders or members of businesses, um, that want to participate on the event committee. So that is the only commission that does. And we also require them to update us if there's any changes in their, um, in their, uh, place of address. So if we have that, and we've actually had a couple of, um, uh, we had a budget committee member that moved out of the city, um, that, uh, because of that was no longer and we replaced. So. Just want to bring up with regards to the residency requirements and questions that were, were there regarding, yes. So.
We also, we also removed two planning commission members for the same reason, over the years.
So, so that was, uh, that, uh, Mr. Siggenhagel's, um, comments on it and, uh, for council. And like I said, you each have, have copies of that. So.
I'd like to expand upon this a little bit because Craig referred to me in his letter in that I supported the discussion around having the mayor elected by community and I did, I did. Uh, however, in the last three years, a lot has changed. One of me they've gotten a little smarter, but mainly we have, we coordinated our governing documents such that there's wonders. They're all consistent now. For example, veto power. It was already in the charter, right? Did the mayor had, did not have veto power, but we actually had ordinances where it said that the mayor did have, fixed that. This, this time around with the update on the charter, we're talking about taking away from the mayor the opportunity to select committee members. We don't do that typically. Anyway, we've always, in my history here and maybe before, it's been a council discussion and, and process for selecting those. So my point being the mayor really has no authority. You know, I run a meeting and I represent the community in various situations and I communicate a lot with staff, but I really don't have any sort of decisions are made by the council. In my view, and I've said this to other organizations such as Amedec, I work for the council or represent them in what I do. So point being, I, I'm squarely in favor of what we currently do. The process, the process works and be quite frank, I'd be a little concerned being elected to come in as a mayor right off the street. Yes, doable, but it would really be a huge uphill learning curve, uh, if you did that. Yeah. So anyway. And then the other issue, I, I hate to keep discussing, but it's important, and I think to bring up the issue. The other one I know Craig is very strong about is the, uh, term limit thing. I'm a strong believer in the voters make that call on a ongoing basis. And I use that as an example. Scott, I want to talk about you for a minute. Few years back, we had a major, major negative situation going in our community over multiple, uh, utility selection. Got really, really ugly and the council in that time was really, uh, in a bad setting with our community. Got Cal and comes up for election. The same time I came on board, Scott got the most votes, right in the middle of this whole process. The public knows Scott and respect him and voted for him. And guess what? Four years later, for a wish running again, Scott got the most votes again. So my point being the public is aware of what's going on and other people on this council. And I think do a good job in, in making the call. So if you don't like what's happening, get somebody to run against us and make it happen. So. So I did, sorry to make the elongated discussion, but it's, I've heard this a lot from Craig. I respect where he's coming from. But I, I think what we're doing really works well. So enough said. Any other comments about this from anybody in the council? You know, council members?
Yeah. To piggyback off you, Jim, I mean, we've talked about this a cou- couple of times and I actually agree with Craig on the, uh, city council and the, uh, council member or the mayor and the, and the council members having term limits. I, I think that's a great thing. The problem is, is us, we have to get enough people to run. So, you know, so I agreed with them, but at the same time, there's got to be enough people running. And, and I'd hate to see that one person happens to run and they get it just because of term, term limits, even though they're not the right, the right fit. And even if the community doesn't, doesn't want this other person and they'd rather have a person on here now, um, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have that option. So if we get a lot more people to run, um, you know, multiple election cycles in a row, then, then I would be more, more willing to listen to that. So.
The source of it being that if your council members feel that way, uh, work with Kevin and get it on the genetic or tissue expression if you think that's appropriate, uh, talk about it. I can pay it all in the many mayor's processes and Hawkington mayors and city councilmen from smaller cities all the state. They have though, with that term limits imposed upon them have struggled immensely to get quality candidates. It's been extremely disruptive for some of these small cities because qualified candidates aren't up there and, and they created a void in the organization as a result. That's not always the case, I'm sure, but it happens way too much. So other comments?
I was going to chime in real quick on that, um, exactly that, small cities. I think, I think this is a more of an issue with the size of the city. It'd be different if we had, you know, 50,000 people in a city versus, you know, 2,500. So I, I, I think the idea behind it's good. Um, I just don't think it's a fit for a city this size. Again, if we had 20 people running for council, it'd be one thing. As far as the, the council electing the mayor, um, to me, it's, to me, it's the same thing. The council is elected by the people, therefore they elect the mayor from the council. So it's still the people electing the mayor and pretty much in my, in my mind.
I agree with Scott, uh, McPhee on everything he said. Um, you know, I agree with the term limits. Um, but it is a, uh, it's an issue getting people to run. We only had three people run last time and, and we're all on the council here. So, um, you know, if it were a bigger city, like Dave said, um, probably, probably would fit right in. So, um, I appreciate Craig's comments. Um, they're very well stated and, and, uh, don't disagree with them.
And mayor, I would just also. Mayor, can you hear us?
I can hear you now. I think I lost you. Can you say something?
Yeah, I, I think you're, we're having problems hearing you. I'm not sure if it's something maybe on your connection. Uh, you might try shutting your camera off, but you're, I don't know if it's just us, but we're, you're very, uh, broken.
On me?
Yes.
Better now?
No.
Are other people hearing me as well?
Yeah, you're, you're very garbled.
Thanks.
Is this any better?
No.
I'm not sure what to do at this point.
You can, uh, try calling in from your phone and then just, uh, get your mic on your computer.
Is it too late to take my comments back on electing the mayor?
And for council, council, just for yours, on committees, um, what, one of the things that was in the policy for the commissions and committees for reappointment, uh, one of the things that incumbents now are required to submit application materials in the same manner as any new applicant. So when their term is up, they have to submit their application. So you're reviewing their applications along with any other applications when you make appointments, reappointments to the committee. So that was in our, um, in the commission and committees manual that you adopted in 2020 as well. So. So anytime that, uh, someone, uh, reaches the end of their term on a committee, they're submitting a new application. Um, and you consider that along with any additional applications that you have at that time. So it's not enough. It's not necessarily an automatic reappointment. Um, it's there for you to review and make a decision.
Texting in information. Nicole.
Can you hear? Is this any better?
Yes.
No, I can't hear you.
You can't hear us?
All right. Now we're good. All right. Yeah, this is cumbersome. Yeah, this is cumbersome. Okay, okay.
Just mute your, mute your, on your mic where it says going audio, Mayor, if you click that arrow up and then say leave computer audio.
I did that.
Okay.
And there's still, okay, here we go. Try to get. All right, any more discussion on this? My final thought would be if council members feel strongly about wanting to talk further about term limits that we ought to get with Kevin and get it on the agenda. And our respect for Craig, who has provided this information to us again. Otherwise, I think we're gonna move on. Okay with that? All right. Way back in the public comments, are there other folks in the public who would like to speak at this time? You can do one or two things, raise your hand, or just start talking to me. I don't see or hear anything, so we're gonna move forward then with the public hearing for the charter, for which I received the script. I'm gonna open the public hearing for considering the city charter amendments. Now, the council proposes to amend the charter as outlined, city charter as outlined in the notice of public hearings on proposed charter changes published the weeks of April 5th and April 12th and April 19th, 2021. In order to amend the charter, section 35 of the Millsburg City Charter requires the council to follow a specific procedure. That procedure has three steps, and they are as follows. One, posting notice in two public places in the current select of the current section of the proposed meeting language, publishing a notice in a newspaper and a grant herald for three consecutive weeks. And thirdly, provide two public hearings regarding the proposed amendment prior to vote by the council. This is the first of those two public meetings. Second public meeting hearing will occur on May 11th. The council may briefly discuss the proposed changes to the city charter, and then council will receive testimony from the audience regarding the proposed changes. So Kevin and Janelle, Forrest, I'm not sure who's leading this. Do you want to review the changes before we ask for public testimony, or do we need to do that?
You do not need to do that. I mean, as long as the council is aware of them, which I'm sure they are, you can discuss among yourselves, and then you can ask for public testimony. So unless you want to do a brief rundown.
But if I, I would just ask you to do that, that's okay. Oh. That's a joke. Council, what's your pleasure? Do you have any comments? Need to hear any of the specifics any further than what you've already seen? Do you have any questions or concerns on any of the items?
This is Cal, and I, I don't. Were you able to hear that? Okay, yeah, and just to let you know, I'm on, I'm on phone now.
Okay. Thank you.
This is John, I'm good with it.
David, Scott?
Yeah, I'm good. I don't, I don't need to hear, hear any more of it.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. So council is good with it. I know we've received one piece of feedback from, from Ron.
So we renamed.
Most one, I know you're there. So Kevin, have you, you, you and Janelle have reviewed, gone, boy, I can't speak. You and Janelle have reviewed Ron's input. Are there questions regarding that input that we need to talk about?
Steve, the first portion of it, I think he may have, have missed something because when we took a look, it looked like it was missing, but we didn't see that there was anything that needed to be. And the, the second one was his asking council to consider allowing the public to request the policy be read versus just the council.
Okay. Ron, there's apparently some confusion around your first suggestion. Can you talk that through with us?
Yeah, let's, it was just the way I read it on the screen, so I'd like to withdraw the comment about section 12.
Okay. Very good, thank you. So, but you have requested that we consider allowing the, a member from the public to ask that the ordinance be read as well.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have a concern with that? Forrest?
No, I have no concern if, if that's what you want. You know, certainly the, the council can do that at any time if you want to allow the public to do it. The only reason that we're really doing this is just to feed the processes, not requiring me to read some lengthy documents. Secondly, I would also point out that, that Mr. Post's position is that by doing this, it may shed more light or be more transparent, but I would also let it be known that all the documents that we're reading and that are being proposed are on the public website, are in the agenda, so they are public already. And so just by reading them does not make them public. I, maybe the argument would be though that they are more public because I have read them.
Okay, so does anybody have any concerns whatsoever, including Ron's language into our, our process?
This is hard. I'm good with it.
I had two people talking on.
Yeah, this is Scott. Could you clarify what the request is? Is the request to go back to having Forrest read the ordinance?
No, Scott, the, the ordinance is being changed to read that that entitled only if no counselor present requests that it be read. And the suggestion is we say no counselor or a member of the public present request that it be.
I understand that. I understand that now, and I, I don't have a problem with that if that's a request from an individual.
Okay, so I recommend then we incorporate this language for the next hearing.
Okay, I will make that change, and it'll be in the document for next year.
Good. Everybody okay with that?
Yep, I'm good.
Yep.
Ron, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any, any further comments on this?
Not for me.
Very good. Any other member of the public have input, feedback regarding the proposed changes to our charter? Hearing none, we're going. I got too many pieces of paper. I lost the, you know. We want to close the hearing and move forward. Move forward in the, moving into council member and staff comments. Will you any council comments? Staff comments? City manager report, starting with the appointment of the budget officer?
Yes, so one of the things we need to do is appoint a budget officer for fiscal year 2021, 2022. And I would like council, or glass, council to consider appointing Janelle Booth as our budget officer for fiscal year 21, 22.
Ooh.
Don't move.
How does Janelle feel about that?
I'm fine.
Don't you have a ref on your plate?
It, it's, it's the right fit this year.
Okay. So I have a motion to accept, or to assign, to award Janelle Booth, the rightful budget officer. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have two or three seconds at one time, but I can't hear too well with this phone, so I think it was, I'm gonna think it was Dave that provided the second. Can you be okay with that? You got it?
I confirm.
Works for me.
I'm sorry?
She said it works for her.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm just gonna jump right to it. Those in favor, please say aye. Or, no, no, use, use your buttons, yes or no.
Mayor, I'm gonna need to say aye in favor.
Thanks, Scott. I'm missing one.
That's Scott, you're missing. He just said aye.
No, no, I'm missing one other one. No, that was, I see it. We got it. Thank you. Motion, motion carried. You know, so we. This, this phone setup not working very well. Project updates?
Okay, so I will let Janelle start off on those, and I'll finish up on the ASA, which we didn't put on here, but I'm gonna report on verbally.
Thank you.
So, short update on the fire station project at this point, everyone's aware, because you took the award. It was awarded to Wildish Saving Company, doing business with Wildish Building Company. We did have a reconstruction conference with them, and we're getting going on the project. All the Lynn County Building and Road Department permits have been obtained. They are working on the 1200C permit, which is the erosion protection control permit required by DEQ. And it has a 30-day turnaround, so that's the only thing they're waiting on now. They wanted to mobilize beginning of next week, but I suspect that's gonna push them back a little bit. They may start doing some mobilization and speaking and surveying anyway. We'll see, but they're anxious to get going. I don't have any other report on that project at this point because we're at the very beginning, but I'll pause here and ask if there are any questions before I go on to the next thing.
Janelle, this is Scott. I have a quick question. Regarding the house that we own, are, are the, are, was there a discussion about them using that as a potential office or off-site office?
Yes, yes. So we offered that as the contractor's field office. They have decided they'll use it initially for some space while they're doing the, before they get their, once they get the site work started and the road kind of in and, and a big part of the earthwork done, they're gonna want to put an actual trailer on the site. So they'll utilize it for the first part of the project, and then they, they won't after that point. They didn't require water to be restored in order to do that, so we, we decided not to spend the effort and money on restoring that water service.
Okay, so did, so temporarily they'll use it, but, but not, not for long term?
Right, they would like to be a little closer to the site, to the actual buildings and the houses when they really get going.
All right, makes sense. Thank you. Could you, yeah, no, that sounds good. Thank you.
All right. A bunch of other projects in. Quick update on our couple of pavement projects we've had going on. Catherine Avenue repair is partially complete, and I anticipate they'll be completing that in coming weeks. We had to do it one half at a time, let the concrete cure, that sort of thing, so they should be finishing it up soon. And the city hall parking lot repair project is complete, and entrance has been reopened. Water and sewer utility billings, just a reminder, keep it on everyone's radar, that the new water and sewer rate structures are now in effect. And the first bills will be in early June. We've been continuing to work to make sure all our customers, mainly commercial, commercial and industrial, are classified correctly under the new structure. Do you want me to?
So our housing needs analysis and buildable land survey, if you recall, one of the things that happens that they were waiting for was the PSU analysis for the population forecast, and you may recall that John Morgan shared. So not here, I think 10 years ago or so, the state legislature passed PSU based on formulas to do the annual forecasting. And I believe it's every three years, three or four years they go through. So we're in region, I think it's region two, they go through and they update. So I think it's three or four regions, so they go through. So our, the last update, it must be three years, because I think the last update that we were in was in 2017. So just by happenstance, I was taking a look to see where they were at, because we hadn't heard anything on their forecast, and I happened to see that day before they were doing a rollout to show the draft, I happened to see on PSU's website that they were gonna roll this draft out. So I had a conflicting meetings, but Janelle sat in on it with Matt. So when they provided the numbers initially, they were showing our 2020 population, how in the world, you would think one side of PSU would talk to the other side on their forecast, but they were showing our population estimate at our starting point for 2020 at 1,826, I believe, or something like that. So Janelle called it out during the meeting, sent an email, and then I sent a follow-up email to them and saying, hey, you know, we're in the middle of this, we need to be making sure that we're on the right. Long story short, they agreed with us that they were off, and that they would address it and come out with, with draft numbers. So they did that, and they have revised our forecast. They now state, and I'm, I'm wondering if they didn't get the 2020 census or see it, because they didn't think they would see the 2020 census before they had this. You may recall, so PSU, in nonsense's years, is tasked with doing population forecast, certified population forecast. So our 2020 certified population forecast that came from estimates from PSU came out at 2815, 50. So what they did, though, what our population for the forecast, for our 50-year forecast, are now showing us at 2912. So somewhere in there. I think we put it in the 2926. So what that says now is in 2045, they're estimating our population will be at 5436. So in the 2017 forecast, our 2067 forecast, the population, I think, was right around 56 or 5,800. They're showing in 2070, so 50 years out, that we would be at 8974. So that was the information that Eco Northwest was needing to complete our buildable lands and housing needs analysis that we're required to use for our planning purposes. So they've started that. Now that that has been done, I believe PSU, they came out with that draft, they shared it, so I think it's been it's, I think it's been finalized or close to it, but actually begin Northwest, and they're gonna be moving forward with completing the housing needs analysis now that the forecasts are, are out, so. That's where we're at on that, and we should be seeing that from them here in the next month or so.
Kevin?
Yes.
Would you, would you agree, Kevin, that what's really driving this, these, these astronomical numbers for projected housing requirements is, in fact, our land use laws that were created back in the mid-'70s, which drives populations to population centers, not allowing them to spread out into the farmland? So with the land use, land use laws in place, and this process simply, it really says you better prepare for it because it's coming whether you like it or not. Because that's what, that's what the system drives, drives it to.
I, yes, I think to some degree, I think our location, to be honest with you, has a lot to do with it for where Millsburg is. And with that, because we're very desirable, you know, we're right next to I-5, and when you look at the population centers, it's more of a rural feel still here versus being in, but you have, but you're in close proximity to the other services. So there's not a lot of communities when you look at, especially along I-5 corridor, they're really situated like that, like us. So I think there's a number of things. The, the industry that's here, and the fact that because of that industry and the planning that took place in this community early on with our systems has allowed it. So it was real interesting, on their initial forecast that they came out, they showed tangents growing larger than us, and, and they don't even have a water system. So, you know, that was one of the things I thought was kind of interesting. They don't, that, that doesn't go into the state's model for forecasting. They don't look at what their, what a community's infrastructure capability is. So, but they did change that, and they modified, they, it actually, they changed tangents as well, but. So there's a number of factors that come into play, but trying to guess how the state came up with this model is difficult.
If you're really interested in it, the presentations that they went through are online. Having sat through it for the, the first time, it was interesting that all, it's all about trends and population age groups, and who's where, and how they expect them to move. It really has nothing to do with the.
Migration and ingrained.
Yeah. It's, it's all about that kind of information and statistics, not about any specific communities and their capability to sustain that growth really, or to support that growth. It's like Kevin said, it's, it's coming, so you need to prepare for it. It's kind of there.
Yeah, gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
But do you have additional items?
Yes, I'll let Janelle talk about the water management, and then I'll touch base on the ASA.
So this is just a heads up, really, that Water Management and Conservation Plan update is coming. We got a little notice from Oregon Water Resources Department about this, which is good. I'm glad they give us the year's notice because it takes a while to update these documents. This is a regulatory document required under our water right permit conditions. It describes the system, explains how we'll manage and conserve supplies to meet future needs. So there's a lot of data that goes into it. It describes the system, explains how we'll manage and conserve supplies to meet future needs. So there's a lot of data that goes into it about, um, about water usage and, and water that we're not accounting for and making sure we're conserving. Um, the current one we have was completed in two thousand twelve and a ten-year update is required by next February. Just the budget level estimate cost that you'll, you'll see in the budget when we get to that point in a few weeks is forty-five thousand dollars. But you have, um, CHM Jacobs putting together a proposal for the update. Again, they've got all the data from the modeling they've done. They did the original plan. Um, so they're gonna be, have the, let Ted start on doing this for us. Um, so we'll be presenting that to you, the contract amendment in May, and at, at that point I'll have a more firm number. Um, one other thing I'll mention that I didn't put on this presentation is park SDCs. I've been emailing back and forth with Deb just to get an update for you. I don't have much of an update yet, but we are meeting on Friday and she said she's close to having the first draft of it done, so. We will be talking about laying out the schedule for the, because we have to go through the ninety, ninety day, I believe, um, notice period and schedule the hearing and, and all that, just like we did with the other SDCs. So we'll get that schedule figured out and then, uh, we'll bring it to you for confirmation.
Okay.
Alright, and then we did.
Hey.
But there's a little more to do.
Hey, Mayor, this is Scott. I'm, I'm gonna have to, I'm, I would have to leave the meeting. Sorry for early absence, but, uh, yeah, I, I need to leave.
Uh, counselor, real quick, before you leave, did you want to, did you wanna say anything about the ASA that, you know?
Yeah, if I, if you don't mind, I'll just say that, you know, we, uh, to the council that we've had a, a, a long, uh, many talks about this, uh, ongoing, uh, you know, I guess I'd say concern in our city with the ASA and having control and, and, uh, over that. This is the, uh, an important meeting that probably won't necessarily have decisions made from it, but will definitely set the tone, uh, in the, in the direction, um, in, in one direction or not. And so I would encourage, uh, councils, council members or any community members that, um, that, you know, are, are encouraged to attend the meeting and, and if, uh, they have something to say, to bring it up and, and discuss. I believe there will be a public forum opportunity to talk and I would encourage, encourage that, so. That's, that's what I was just gonna talk about. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, thanks, guys. Good night.
Good luck, Kevin, or Janelle.
You don't go over the Gantt chart real quick.
Oh, um, I was just gonna mention, the Gantt chart has been updated. We, we still probably have some things to add to it and I wasn't gonna go over anything specific on it unless you had questions.
It's getting smaller.
It is, although I, I don't think that's representative of the items we're working on. That's why I said I think it needs some. But this was our initial list of all the things we wanted to get done. It is getting smaller. Um, those are changing into other things now, like, you know, the fire station project is one line on there, but it takes a lot of, a lot of time.
Great, good stuff. Thank you.
So, Mayor, on the ASA, so as, uh, Chief Wootton mentioned earlier, so we do have the ASA. So you recall, um, we went to the county commissioner, so we went to the ASA committee previously. They were unable to come to an agreement, so we sent it, we asked the commissioners to, to take action on it, so they passed two resolutions. Uh, one granting us the authority to, to, uh, establish an ambulance licensing procedure if we need to, in our events. Um, we have held off on doing that. Uh, wanna see if we can get through ASA question first, um, on it. So the, um, commissioners referred this back to the ASA committee to come back to a recommendation. So if they cannot provide a recommendation, or depending on the recommendation they have, then the county, then the commissioners can make a final determination on it. So they sent out questions to Albany Fire, a group of five questions to Albany Fire and Jefferson Fire, and a group of three questions to us, which I responded to and I sent them to Counselor Cowan. Um, the draft that I did before I sent them, uh, for his, uh, review and feedback as well on it. And I can pull that up and share it with you, uh, briefly if you'd like to see it. It's about, uh, about six pages of, of material, but pretty much walked through from early on in the process. So I think as most of you remember, um, one of the things I'd shared is, you know, I was actually chief of Albany when this, uh, change took place with Jefferson in nineteen ninety-nine. Um, and actually throughout those years until I retired in two thousand eight, had three different occasions where Jefferson approached Albany Fire Department about what would be the possibility of taking over all of Millersburg. So that's documented in there, um, on it, because one of the questions that they've asked about is, um, what has taken place previously and how were concerns brought up and addressed? And then ultimately, um, how we've addressed it was what took place, um, in two thousand seventeen. And then in two thousand eighteen was the city entering into an old government agreement. I'm with it. So I'm more than happy to, to share that with you. Um, they did, as, uh, Counselor Cowan mentioned, there will be an opportunity if, if people want to, um, speak. I don't know how many public will be there, but he and I talked, I think he is, was going to approach some people that might be interested in, in speaking as well on that. Um, on that, but I'm more than happy to pull that up or I can send it to you if any of you would like to see what our, what the city's response was.
What's a pleasure, the council. Dave, what's your, what's your read on it? You wanna say it or you wanna have him send it to you?
If he can send it to me, that'd be great.
I, I'd prefer to have it sent to me, yes.
Okay.
I will, I'll email it to you. It, uh, they went out to the ASA committee yesterday, so I will, uh, it, it had to be in last night at five, so that's why we didn't, uh, include it, um, in the packet, so.
So Kevin, this meeting is on this Thursday, is that correct?
Yeah, Thursday at one o'clock.
So you're suggesting that we get some folks show up, right?
If, um, if there, if there's people that are interested, I mean, I don't think it's been advertised. I would not be surprised that, uh, there may be an entity that has some people, tries to bring some people. So, um, that was one of the things I talked with Scott about, that, um, it might not hurt to have, uh, if there's any individuals that would like to speak on behalf of the city on why they feel it's important to have that, uh, that on there. So one of the things that, um, I've shared with them is, uh, I've talked in my responses. I pointed out, uh, a number of things, um, that continuity of, of care, um, and continuum of care with the agency. But also that the city has expressed a desire, you know, if we see, as we see our industrial properties, um, develop and things, there may be a desire on the city to, to increase the staffing out of, uh, the Millersburg station to provide for EMS, transport out of that station as well. So, uh, I don't think that's something that you're gonna be interested in paying another organization to, to do, so.
Well, transport, if we received the approval from ASA to, to have Albany provide ambulance service, it would function out of our own station, would it not?
No, it would, uh, it would come out of one of Albany's current stations. Most, most of the time, the majority of time it'd be coming out of Station thirteen.
Thirteen.
We still have, we still have the first response coming out of our station, which is an AL and, uh, advanced life support engine company with paramedics on it, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a call in the morning or sometime. I'm gonna talk about in the woods when, whether I, I should be there and whether or not I should plan on speaking. Um, I have no problem doing either one, but we'll talk to you about that tomorrow.
Okay.
Where's the meeting, where's the meeting at?
It's.
Oh, that's, that's good. Alright, I'll talk to you tomorrow about this.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you very much. Um, any other reports from management?
That is all I have.
Forrest, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
I'm finished, thank you. I'm finished with the application for regional significant industrial site application.
Yes.
Didn't we discuss this before?
We did. So we did discuss this previously, Mayor, and council gave us approval to move forward with it. And as we were filling out the, um, application, we're getting close to sending it in, I noticed one of the things that they asked for is documentation to verify authority to submit the application on behalf of the city. Um, and we talked about, we didn't specifically ask, in the motion that was made, there wasn't specifically motion, um, for it. It was motion to move forward with completing the application. I think we probably could have done it, but based on what they're asking for on it for documentation, I thought, you know, we have time, let's bring it back and ask for council to approve the attached resolution authorizing the signing of the application for regional significant industrial site application. So it's a reminder, one of the things this will do is we can come in and we're gonna be estimating what we expect to be looking at our costs for development of the site. And when we put that in there, um, once that's in there, if we're accepted for this, we could be eligible for reimbursement of those costs moving forward as we see development occurs through the state from, from taxes, income tax.
Okay. So is the resolution in front of us? I can hardly see it.
That is the resolution and the motion is in the, we just, we just asked for approval of this, uh, resolution granting, um, this, we just need approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh seven.
I'm moved to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh seven.
Okay.
Motion from Dave, second from Scott McPhee. Any further discussion? If not, let's go ahead and vote, please. Looking for one more.
Scott is, uh, Mayor's Counselor Cowan had to drop off.
Yes, I know. I was, I didn't see Scott McPhee so much. Okay, motion carried, uh, with the, with Scott Cowan not being present. Okay, thank you. Any new business? Agenda says none. Any closing public, public comment from anybody that would like to speak to us at this time? Final, final shot. If not, closing council comments? Anything from the council? I have a question, Kevin, Janelle. One, our budget committee meeting, there's two meetings that's advertised, I, I don't see them on here and I don't have them on my calendar. Have they been identified?
Yes, and we sent out the notices a month ago, I think. Email went out, or so, April twenty.
April twenty what? Twenty-seventh?
April twenty-seventh.
Okay.
And then the following May, May fourth.
Can we get meeting notices out, forget them on our calendars? Does that make sense?
I thought Jake could send, but we'll.
You just sent an email.
I think he sent an email with the calendar.
I think he's looking for the council meeting reminders to get them put on their calendar, you know, when you send out the invites through, um, asking.
That's what we were just talking about, Kim. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
We will send that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from council? Forrest? Okay, we're gonna adjourn our regular meeting and go into executive session. So I would ask those of you who are visitors to please exit and thank you so much for being here. Uh, I'm assuming, Janelle, we're staying on this meeting? Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we there?
I see only Forrest, your phone number, our phone number, Dave, John, and Scott, um, so yes.
Okay, we're good. So with that in mind, and the Millersburg City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS one ninety-two point six six zero two H, which allows a council to meet in executive session to consult with legal counsel concerning legal rights and duties regarding current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Also, ORS one ninety-two point six six zero two E regarding deliberation with persons designated by the city of Millersburg to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room or sign off if this executive session is, is virtual meeting. Representatives of the news media are also specifically recommended to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced.